I'd like to welcome everybody here. I believe we have one other commissioner that'll be showing up. Oh, there she is now.
I've never played for anything.
Okay, come on. The people on the media, they're gonna catch that one.
I hear that next to me.
So, we just called the meeting order. Did you hear that while you were walking in?
Yes.
And the first item of business, in fact, it looks like the only item on the business, is discussion about the SR3 and Parrot Ridge options. And at this time, I guess we want to turn this over to our executive director, Craig Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Originally, we were going to bring this back after our updates on the 12th of December. But after meeting with myself, Ryan Meaton, and Mayor David Frantz, met with local programs engineer of Olympic Region last week, Neil Campbell, he gave us a deadline for inactive projects. They need to report back on those inactive projects by the 5th of December. If they do not report back or have status of those projects, the recommendation will be to discontinue those projects and the funding that goes with them. So, it leaves us with a fairly time-sensitive issue that we need to get them a letter no later than the end of today. So, that is why we are here today. If we do not get a decision today, I think that most likely that will be Neil Campbell's answer, that we didn't respond, and I don't know what that will look like. So, we have scrambled around somewhat to get all of the options together for you. I think we've come up with three very good options for you to consider. The projects that we have, there are two different projects out there right now. Two different funding sources for those two projects. The first project is the SR3 historical project and also the SR3 parking ride. And they are two individual projects with individual funding sources. So, that is something to keep in mind. The project breakdown sheet that is in your packet, I believe it's the second page. I think if we go through that before we look at these options, it will be helpful. At this point, the row 14 of this project summary shows you the amount that the city of Shelton has spent on each project individually and the total amount that we have spent combined. So, at this point, with the historical entryway project, we have spent a total of $192,327. The parking ride project, we have spent $219,043 to date, for a total of $411,370 on both projects. That money, if we do not move forward and decide to complete either or both of them, we will have to pay back that money to local programs because they are federal-funded. They were fully grant-funded. Would you like to go down through the project sheets individually?
I don't know. I've studied it. I've read this. You know, I mean, it's really where we want to go with it. I don't know that we have to, I mean, the numbers kind of speak for themselves, you know, and I think we, I don't know if anybody has any more information that they need about this. We've been talking about it for 17 years.
I have one question on the numbers here. Is this, the total amount spent is grant-funded? All of that is grant?
That is.
Or are there city matches within these numbers?
No, those numbers are the numbers that we would have to pay back to local programs. And we did, after our last meeting, Ryan and myself, actually, I'm sorry, Bob and myself went to, Bob Towser, our interim city engineer, talked to Danette from Mason Transit. They did join up with us as a partner in this project to try to help us get it done and gave us $200,000 towards, out of their grant funding, to try to push this forward, which did ease the cost somewhat. So, the three options that we have before you today. Option one is to utilize the remaining funds of $286,829 of federal funds, the $200,000 donation from MTA, which would leave the city funds needed to be $554,829 to complete both projects. Option two.
Craig, can I ask a question?
Yes.
If we don't do this, we need to pay the $200,000 back to MTA?
No, MTA, we do not have to pay anything back to MTA at this point. That is a grant offer from them that they would contribute if we want to move forward with the project.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't got that money yet.
Okay.
We have not got that money yet.
I see, okay, I understand.
Any questions on option one? There is a timeline in the back of your packet. I believe it is page four or five. We are fairly close to the land transfer within the next couple of weeks. We touched on it last week. Within the next week or two, hopefully next week, we will be bringing forward the land transfer for these projects from Simpson Timber Company. And we will be finishing that. That was a big hurdle to get over. This is a fairly aggressive timeline to finish both projects. We do have some hurdles within this timeline. We have to go back out for environmental in that area. It was done quite a few years ago, and we don't think that that will be sufficient to move forward. That could be a stumbling block for us. We don't know exactly. We've got Boot Hill down there that we have to deal with that has had some sweepings and been piled up down there and covered up. So, we've got that issue to deal with.
That wasn't tested? That pile wasn't tested? Or that, that was not tested earlier? You don't know what's in it, right? You said you have a pile.
It was tested.
It was.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah. They've allowed us to spread that on the parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay, thank you.
So, we do have some hurdles to get through on this, though, just because it has been hanging out there for so long that we are going to have to review some of these steps as we move forward, and they will have to be revisited. So, option two would be a cheaper option to, we haven't spent quite as much money on the historical entryway. We have expended more funds, federal funds, on that portion. So, option number two would be to utilize the remaining $196,156 of federal funds left for the park and ride entryway portion or project, which would also utilize the $200,000 from MTA, leaving $275,000 left to contribute from the city and pay back $192,000 for the historical project.
So, on option two, if I'm very clear on this, we now only have to raise the $275,000, but we also have to pay back $192,000.
That is correct.
They can't roll that in on this, you don't roll, do they?
Two separate projects.
Yeah. So, the cost on this one is almost as much as the top one.
That is correct.
$554, and this one here would be about a four, something six or seven.
$467.
$460. So, would be $100,000 less. And that is, those estimates are in the cost breakdown of both projects and what it would take to get one of those done, the park and ride entryway.
Okay. Let me ask a question here at this point. We already know option three, and we're gonna get to that. But about option one and option two, and those two options, there is a $100,000 difference, okay? What is, throwing money aside, which unfortunately has been what we've had a habit of doing, but let's not take money and do, what's the, what's the most realistic picture of getting this done after our meeting with the state, which we know we're down to about this much time, okay? And what is, is either one of those projects, realistically, which one is easier for us to accomplish and get done? Do you have an opinion on that one?
I don't think one is easier than the other. And I don't think that it's more difficult to get both of them done as opposed to just getting the parking ride done.
Okay.
They are at about the same stage, and I don't know that it would be any more work for us to get done. Well, it would be more work, but it wouldn't be a lot more burden on us to get both projects done as opposed to getting only the parking ride done.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I think at this point, I would like to just make a little statement, not to interrupt your presentation, but I think for the public. What we have to understand is we've been talking about this for a long, you know, a long time. I've kind of said this before, and that I always ask questions, and in the past, not blaming all, any person on this, but there have been problems. This didn't happen. We had to do this. We gotta do this. We did this. This happened here. From my understanding with the state, and correct me if I'm wrong, had we been a little more communicative to the state and had we continued getting regular monthly draws and regularly hitting this instead of letting years pass, we'd be in a lot better shape than we are today. Was that what I got from the conversation with the state?
That is true. We should have been doing monthly billings or at least quarterly billings even if we didn't have anything to bill against the project.
So, nothing to do with these commissioners here. This was a staff situation. I mean, staff, however you want to term that, did not fulfill the obligation to keep this thing to where it would have been a much better situation where I was making a decision on this had they been more prudent in filling the proper steps out. And, I mean, we're kind of, somebody let the ball down to where we gotta, in one day, make a decision on something that's been in the works for 17 years. And I might seem a little disappointed and frustrated, but the state, you know, we may make steps in this direction, and they may pull a plug almost anyway, but...
That is entirely possible.
But, I mean, I'm just trying to explain what the one hour or two hour meeting we had with them was in, that we were left in a situation, and I did ask the questions over the years, and, and I'm not saying that those, but there were always obstacles and problems that existed that were beyond staff's ability. So, I'm trying to be fair in my thing, but still, we should have done those monthly draws. We should have been more in communication with the state because now we're coming down to the dead zone, and we gotta come up with half a million dollars.
We have, we've been in communication with local programs over the last six weeks. We've been there four times. We've been on the phone another four or five times.
We have.
We've done, I think, a decent job in trying to catch up. In looking back over the last two decades, part of the issue we had is that this project took so many different forms, and it was never really a priority for the city. So, one of the things that we've made very clear to local programs, that we decide to do something from now on, we're only doing it because it's a priority. With that being said, as you just mentioned, we can sign any of these letters. We can send them in, and they can turn around and say, "It's too late."
Yeah.
And I think they've appreciated the communication, but they've expressed a number of times that time is different now than it was 10 years ago, 15 years ago. And even if they accept one of these options, we, and we don't get this, we don't get done what we are gonna try to do, we still may end up having to pay back these projects. Correct?
That's correct.
It's a very, very difficult situation because if we do nothing, we still gotta come up with $400,000 and say, "Whoops." And I don't want to do that. I don't want to give up on $400,000. I believe if, and this is just, I'm sorry to take this time up here at this point in the meeting, but I believe from my communication with the state, that if we truly show that we want to make this a priority and we really want to get this thing done, and we follow in with our monthly billings, as the gentleman said, if we write the letters and if we make this a priority, which, you know, is a possibility, that they, we possibly could squeak by on this one, but there is a gamble. There's a gamble with this. But the bottom line is, if it was zero and we walked away, if it was $100,000 and we walked away, I could easily see that as a realistic option. But $400,000 paying for nothing is not a very good option, and it's a hard position to be in knowing that probably we wouldn't have to bend here if all of the communications and certain things done in the past years were a little bit more on top of things. That's just my little venting about making this decision now because none of this was really our fault at all. We are stuck with having to make the tough decision now on not, on a project that we kept hearing, "Well, we got this." I never knew. I was never, ever told that monthly, if we, if we did it this way, we could prolong the date or the cut off. I never told that dead date was coming up real soon. And so, had we just, we got $200,000 in money that we can still draw for this project. Is that $196,000. But if we just did monthly billings, it would have shown them, but I think we went like two or three years without getting a, getting a draw. Is that correct? Like, not your fault. You weren't there.
We've been about a year since we've, since we've done any bills.
One year.
And I agree with you. We have had, I think, as a staff, I think we lost focus of this project, and I don't think we were very transparent in what we were doing. We certainly are trying to do that at this point and moving forward with better communication with not only staff but also with local programs to find a way to get this done. There are some things to consider also with this. The, this has been on the shelf for so long that these funds that are available, the $286,000 that is still available to us, will not cover any staff time and has been deobligated at this point. We have to go back to WashDOT to see if we can get that funding reinstated. They thought that that was a very good possibility, but they did not guarantee it. There were some steps that we had to follow through with to get that funding back that was even above and beyond writing these letters asking to reinstate this project. Because it was consultant-only, we are going, this, these funds now were not designated for construction. We now have to go back and try to get these funds to go towards the construction of this project. So, that is not a guarantee to get that done either. So, as you can see, we have got some hurdles to get over, and we don't know how we get over those at this point.
And one thing that would help us in making our decision, I think, is, is, and I was in the meeting, and I heard, and I got a little glimmer of hope that we could pull this off, okay? But it wasn't a guaranteed hope. And what I would say, that if I was asked to make this decision, in a guesstimation on how much more money we would possibly have to spend in order to make sure that we were gonna get this thing, because if it's $5,000 or $10,000, I could probably go that way, but if we're gonna put $40,000 or $50,000, $60,000 again into something, and then they pull that plug, then we, I mean, that's a dangerous situation. And you gentlemen have been to a lot more of those meetings and stuff, so, I mean, we just need, in making our decision, we need some realistic, I mean, it's a crapshoot in this situation. So, I think we need to know, okay, let's, let's move forward. Let's fill out the monthly reports. Let's work with them. Let's go, how much more money is the city gonna put towards this with the potential of getting the whole thing pulled?
You run a great risk of doing that. That is correct.
$50,000? Ryan, do you?
I, it doesn't take long to spend $50,000.
We can get into a 50, city, put another $50,000 kind of into this.
The only guarantee from these options is to find the money to pay back what we spent now. If we, and I don't know that you're going to get a really strong recommendation from us because this, there is some gamble here. If we go forward with one or two, spending $50,000 or $100,000 and not getting it done and having to pay it back, I think is, it's a reasonable likelihood that could happen.
Just to give you, to answer your question of how quickly that could happen, if you look at line number three, the $40,000 that is needed to complete the plans and specs are still happening. We are still spending money to get those done, and we anticipate that those should be done fairly soon. So, to answer your question, $40,000 could be spent very quickly if we decided to move forward with this and not knowing if we're going to be able to get this funding reinstated and move forward with these projects.
Which includes staff time.
Which includes staff time.
Does not include, the $40,000 does not include staff time.
Correct. That's consultant time only. So, within the next month, we could certainly burn through $50,000 very easily.
Are we under contract with whoever is doing this project?
Yes.
So, we would be obligated to continue that contract whether or not we go forward?
No, we can halt that contract at this point.
But we would still have to pay back whatever.
We would have to pay back what has been expended so far.
Are you, I had a couple comments, and I don't know if you're going to, if that was the, the new presentation or, it has to do with, so, the total, everything is based on two separate projects, or do some of the, some of the projects overlap?
No, they are two separate projects. So, if you look at that cost breakdown sheet, there is the historical, there's the park and ride, and then in the far right column is the combined.
Okay. Because one thing that gives me also some hope is I have talked to, I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to call the Heritage Grant, and she sounded fairly positive that at least we would be able to get a matching, matching funds for the funds that the city has to expend for the historic entry.
We did speak with her off Monday. Our issue was time. And she did say that, obviously, she's familiar with the project and thought it would be a good thing, but for the timeline that we're under with local programs, we don't even be close if we have to stick to their timeline because their next grant cycle is two years away. So, that, that made it tough.
So, and is that retro, I mean, can we retroactively?
Not for what has been done.
No.
Okay. Another option that I have talked to as well is Missing Conservation because that, that walkway that is planned goes through O'Leary's area, and have you?
We haven't spoken to them yet.
Okay. But I was, and it's been some time, probably six minutes, since I talked to Missing Conservation, but they definitely were interested in helping out with that project as well.
One thing that's been clear the last two weeks, we have spoken with MTA, local programs, Heritage, we spoke with the Port. If today we were putting this project together, we would have a very strong partnership from agencies throughout the community and the region. Port is interested. They have expressed interest in the past, and that never came to fruition. We never included them. They offered to go get grant money to help out and put in some boat trailer parking on part of the site, which we felt would have been a good addition for the community. Unfortunately, we never took them up on their offer, and now they're a year out from even being able to request that type of money. So, obviously, the fiscal concern is, and every one of these options, and I think our recommendation would be a lot stronger if we didn't have this time constraint, but we feel we could build a good partnership throughout the area, but this timeline is making that very difficult.
The funding is very difficult also. We have a fairly poor reputation with local programs at this point. If we write them a letter telling them that we are designating funds to this project to get it done, and at some point in the future, don't follow through with that, I think that puts even, that makes our reputation even worse than it already is. So, if we do decide to move forward with this, I think we have to be committed to it. And as a staff, we certainly have some serious concerns with moving forward with this. There are a lot of unknowns. I know we've spent significant funds on this project at this point, but we are still finding things on a daily basis on this project.
Like what kind of things?
Everything from land transfers of how that is being done, we're getting close to getting that done, to expenditures, to review of plans that we didn't have staff look at. We have got the environmentals that are so far outdated. We have got a lot of stuff that we continue to find digging into these projects, and it is staff time that we are spending every day on this project.
I had a question. Okay. Is it possible, let's just, let's just imagine that somehow we come up with option three. We just bite the bullet, we just hit the moment. Is it possible to save anything out of what we've done? Can we still get that land? See, the land, if you got the land, then five years from now, this could all come back. Okay. I mean, could we, can we still move forward and just at least acquire the land that makes this happen?
Yes, we should, we should have the land, hopefully, by next week.
That's, and whether we continue or don't, we got that.
Yes, that is correct. There is a possibility that we could get some forgiveness out of this. We did take down the old treatment plant.
Yeah, absolutely. That was a big, big project.
Which was around $80,000. We did float that past local programs and ask them if there was a possibility that we may not have to pay that portion back. They didn't give us a direct answer, but they told us it was a possibility. So, there is the potential, if we decide to pay it back, that this amount could be somewhere in the range of $80,000 less. But we certainly don't want to tell you that without knowing for sure, but there is that possibility.
The staff time that is being used currently on this project or the staff time that would be on this project, that's the same staff that would be reviewing the other two projects that we'll be discussing, not working on?
It's staff time that could be reviewing those, could be going towards finding a solution to the angle side tank, could be resolving the latecomers agreement for Upper Mountain View, could be looking for additional grants for street projects. Certainly, we are spending time on this, yes, that could be utilized in different areas.
But if we don't, if we decide not to do the other two projects, then that frees up a little bit, that lessens the burden a little bit. And if we continue to just let Angle Side sit there, then they're not using time on that. So, the other ones, I agree, are, are important as far as finding... So, the other ones, I agree, are, are important as far as finding grants and solving some of the other issues we have. But just, any project that we take away will not be included in that staff time, would then?
Certainly.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'm probably made up my mind, you know, I've been toying with it, I mean, it's a hard decision, but if there was some debt, possible forgiveness on the four hundred eleven thousand, if possibly seventy or eighty thousand we could get back because we took down the building, that might alleviate that payment down to a three hundred and fifty thousand mark. Is that a possibility? That was the change.
That is a possibility. I wouldn't say that that is a strong possibility, but yes, it is a possibility.
I, at this point, I, there's no way I can continue forward with this project. It's sad, it's seventeen years, it's, it's none of our fault, but we got to make the decision, and we have so many things on our plate.
Yes, we do.
That right now, if we get the property, this project can come back. Better days is soon coming down the pipe, and I just cannot support option one or option two. And because of we, this isn't our only one that we're going to have to possibly give up on.
That's correct.
And so, all I can say is, is representing the citizens of Shelton, the taxpayers of the city, sometimes things don't work out. I'm not going to blame one person on any of this because I believe there were a lot of problems, and we're still finding out more, but unfortunately, this will have to just go on the dream pile if that's what we choose to do because I just can't see risking another fifty thousand dollars even towards something that, and I was in the meeting, we spent hours with those gentlemen, and there's a possibility, but we'd have to have a lot more money and a lot more speed and a lot more staff time to pull this one off. I'm afraid that, that, you know, and it's not an easy decision, but my vote would be for option three.
My question is, if we go with three, we have quite a big chunk of money to pay back. Is the money that has been expended, is that money, would we be able to get the value of the money that has been spent, retain the value, like over the plans as they are, will we be able to use those plans if we move forward in the future? Or will we be looking at a completely new project? Are the plans so old that recs have changed?
It probably depends on how long it took us to bring back a collaborative effort with some of other partners. Would really depend on the plans, and I think it would be a timing issue of how long that sat on the shelf.
I just, I have a real problem with paying four hundred and eleven thousand for nothing. And then my other question is, have we identified what source that four hundred and eleven thousand dollars would come from if we do opt for that to pay it back?
We have not. Payment options, but what's the feds require? Cash today, I mean?
In all honesty, they could call us up today and say they want it back. With that being said, we don't, we haven't identified for any of these options.
Money. Sure, yeah, that's why we're in a situation with that. Tough decision. Kathy McDowell, what are you thinking about?
Well, I started crunching.
Tracy, if I could just answer your question, or the mayor's question, as far as paying back, they have told us if we decide to give these projects back, it would be a signed letter with a check delivered to them.
Okay, and that's what I understood in there.
Yes.
That's nice. Makes it easier.
That's okay, that's okay.
Makes it a lot easier on us.
Well, I looked at these numbers and I've gone, gosh, that's a ton of money. We need to send the money back and put this project to rest for a while. I'm, I'm option three. The others are all, you know, much more money and, you know, there's no guarantee that these would be the numbers that we would be spending. It could add up, it could be another fifty thousand, another hundred thousand, another hundred and twenty thousand on top if we accepted one or two.
Certainly it could be.
I don't want to take that chance. So, I'm going to go with option three.
There, there is a silver bullet with option three. There is a silver lining in the cloud or whatever. When I negotiate grants or loans with the state legislature people, when I go over with sewer funding kind of things, walking away from something like this definitely puts you in a case where somebody would give you a lot more leniency on other possible things that we have. We have basin three over there. See, this isn't our only pony in this whole little world we're living in here. We have basin three over here that I'm negotiating with. This is proof in the pudding. If you walk away from a four hundred thousand dollar investment that went sour on you, you know, you, you, it's just another thing to say, we need every bit of help we can for finishing that one because we can't walk away from that one. You know? So, I, I, it's a tough decision, it's not easy, but, you know, and I, I'll be honest, I didn't have the decision made when I came here. Yes.
We need to add a public comment on this item before a vote is taken.
Sure. So, if there's anybody from the public that wants to weigh in on this, you have three minutes.
Maryland has.
You can stay there if you wanted, you can walk up there, I mean, it's a small room.
I'm just standing. There's a vote for plenty East Poplin. It's kind of difficult to speak after two of the commissioners have voiced their position, but I would urge you that we continue with this project. I know it's difficult for staff, I know it's difficult to look at additional expenditures, but I like to put it in context. This is not the only project we're likely to be paying money back on. We have an additional, I believe, about sixty, seventy thousand on the sidewalk project that may need to be paid back. This is not the only bright hope in Shelton that we would be giving up on because apparently there is not enough cooperation from SPI to continue with the Roundhouse project, and it looks like that one is going to die as well. I think for the community to hear that we have a one point seven million dollar white elephant on the angle side that may never work, for the community to hear we're giving up on the pear orchard, we've heard stories about grafting the original trees and how important it is to maintain Shelton's history. I've worked with the transit center and I know how important that park and ride is to commuting, to employment for people in Shelton. I think this would be a serious blow to community morale, and I would hope that as you look at all the additional work that needs to be done, you look at the enthusiasm that the community has drawn together in the past to volunteer time, to volunteer skills, to volunteer efforts, perhaps there are things on this project that could be done by local people, bringing their skills to it. And simply for the sake of what Shelton sees in its future, or whether it sees a future, I would urge you that you need to push forward with this project one hundred percent, one hundred and twenty percent to see if we can make it happen.
Thank you for your comment. You some backup?
Just one, one more thing, Mayor and Commissioners, Bob Towser brought to my attention a very good point, that to address the question of could we use the plans and the environmental assessment in the future, we certainly could with just some updates. So, those would certainly be at a much reduced cost in the future than they would be starting forward. So, if we wanted to try and partner with MTA, the port, find some other funding sources in the future, the cost of this project certainly would be much less because we could utilize those plans with just an update.
Yeah, I, I had a couple more questions.
Sure.
Hey, imagine that the port had some ideas, some things that they would like to add, such as the boat parking, et cetera. I'm assuming that that could be added on later anyway, like if we did like the bare bones plan that we have been looking at, and I'm talking about the park and ride now. If we did that, then later the port could come in and do enhancements and add amenities if, if they chose to do that.
Correct.
So, I, I'm going under the assumption that we complete the park and ride project and that, and then the port could come in and do additions to that later. So, this doesn't necessarily exclude the port from doing, from doing that.
Option two is what you said, the bare bones?
Yeah.
For the most part, it would get the park and ride finished, it would give MTA the opportunity to expand. There is a second phase to this that MTA was going to do. So, yes, if you did option two, it would certainly leave open the possibility for expansion by MTA, the port, putting some facilities in there in the future.
Can you describe what the park and ride looks like if we completed that?
The park and ride, if we complete just phase one of it, is basically a paved pull off in the gravel area that's out there now with somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty parking stalls, I think it was in the, more in the neighborhood of fifteen. That would basically just be an illuminated wide turnout for some parking stalls, but it would not include a bus pull off lane. So, at this point, if we did the bare minimum, MTA would have difficulty pulling in there, they would have to pull up past the parking stalls to take on riders or offload them, which would be difficult, not impossible, but difficult. But it is basically just a paved pull off is really what it is at this point.
A paved pull off, but I'm assuming stormwater.
Correct.
Stormwater and all of those infrastructure things that are.
Everything that comes.
That add to cost.
Yes.
Yeah. So, that would be the ground for that. Okay, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm looking at doing option two, getting a product or something that we can build on, and only having to pay back two hundred thousand is more attractive to me.
We have at four hundred and seventy six seven thousand.
Because you have to add the city's amount.
You have to add the, add the city's amount, you have to.
Oh, 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 oh.
So, we actually pay back four hundred, if it was two hundred, that's what I was thinking before I came to this meeting, or before I got this, this memo, and I would have been open to go in that direction and try everything I could to put this as a priority. But it's six, it's four hundred and sixty seven additional thousand dollars is what it is. Yeah.
What?
Four sixty seven.
It's the, you would have to pay back a hundred and ninety two thousand plus city contribution of two hundred and seventy five thousand in row number twelve to complete just the park and ride.
It's really all about money, isn't it? I mean, that's really what it boils down to, how are you going to pull this city together on all the things you want to try and do, and so, I mean, it is, it's a very tough decision.
So, that, what we're looking at with that is the expenditure of four, we're, are we looking at four sixty seven versus four eleven? I mean, if we go with option two, we're looking at the expenditure of four hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty seven thousand blah blah and the change, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, this is good.
And if we go with option three, we get nothing for the quarter eleven.
Well, we had, we replaced, we took down a building, we probably will get the property, we'll probably have moved the project farther that it could be brought back at a later date. We have the possibility of some loan forgiveness of forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. I mean, those are possibilities, as a lot of this is possibilities. You know, I'm, I'm open to table this thing, but the problem is we don't even have the time to table it.
We don't have time to table that.
You are correct though, Tracy. You're looking at, if you move forward with the park and ride alone and pay back the historical entryway money, you're looking at four hundred and sixty seven thousand. If you table the entire thing, you're looking at paying back four hundred and eleven thousand. Either option, you still end up with the land.
Yeah, and yes, and if we get that eighty thousand, if we get that eighty thousand, then it brings it down to three hundred and thirty one.
I would say it's possible, not probable, that we get that forgiveness.
Yeah. You think it is not probable?
Sorry, yes, I, I think it's not probable to, to get that funding back.
I have another question if I could, just a second here. Okay, here, but this does not, the problem is, is I, I have a problem with us saying four sixty seven and it being five sixty seven.
That is a possibility.
That's a strong possibility.
Or even more.
Because we talked about staff time, we talked about this and, and stuff, and, and you know, it's this kind of situation that, you know, not to brag about myself, but I've been screaming for ten years, we can't keep doing this stuff and thinking that a fairy godmother's going to show up and pay for it. That this was, this day I knew would come unless major economics came into this city. And, and is, I'm, I'm afraid of falling into the footsteps of the past if we, because every one of these that we keep trying to, to get, it's, it just puts us in worse and worse financial condition. Having said that, the reality of writing a check for four hundred and eleven thousand dollars out of our reserves to pay to the federal government, this is not an easy decision in any way, but we have to, we have to know that we have to make that decision. And, you know, I mean, I, I just tell you, you know, I, I'm sympathetic on all sides, but the only guarantee is that we pay four hundred and eleven or hopefully three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back. We've got the property, we've got a project, we stopped using staff time on something that we got, we got other priorities, other things that we got to do, and I'm probably back to where I was, and that's to literally walk away from this project at this time, hopefully securing the property.
We will secure the property.
Yes, that's shipping sale.
So, I don't know, that's where I am on it, folks. This is the hardest decision I've had to make right here, walking away with four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. But that's probably where I'm at.
My, my strong feeling is that it is far more practical and of more value to go with option two.
Okay.
I feel like there is a risk of an additional four hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Well, we could say there's an additional five hundred thousand, but, you know, looking at it from the information that we've been given, it, I, I feel like it makes more sense to get a product for all the time that has been expended, to make it more attractive to build on in the future, to complete the project in the future with our partners. And I feel like, I feel like option two is definitely the best option for me.
Well.
I'm, I'm going to go to option three. I, there's just too much past of starting a project and the costs skyrocketing. If there was an absolute guarantee that there would only be this much, that would be one thing, but we don't know that for sure. We can walk away with the property, put the project on halt, tweak the plans and whatever through the next few years.
Prosperity will come.
Keep, keep the plans up to date on this, and then when we do, when prosperity does come, then we can go forward, we'll have the plans ready to go. And so, I'm going to go with option three.
Okay, I just would like to put off that we have a lot of things we're putting off until prosperity comes.
Well, we can't do them. I mean, we don't have the money.
Well, we don't ever have the money. Okay, option two for me.
I think that's where we are, so.
I think we need to call for a vote.
Okay, so, we have discussed this at length, but this time we'll make a motion, and so I would entertain a motion.
Um, I make a motion that we accept option three with that we pay back all city of Shelton expended federal funds to date of four hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All who was in favor, say five, by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.